Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Seven forty. Apologize for the late start. We just came from executive session. We discussed non-union compensation. I'm gonna go a little out of order here. I'm gonna go straight to resolution number two. In the interest of timing for people who need to get somewhere, very important, or one person who does. So, resolution number two. Considering the appointment, I should say before I get to that, we are joined tonight by Suzanne Volpe.
Good evening, everybody. I'm from Keenham Bean. Happy to be here. Represented the village of Rybrook for a long time. I've not sat in this seat in quite some time, but it's like riding bikes. Happy to see everybody.
Welcome back. Thank you for coming tonight. So, resolution number two, considering the appointment of an assistant building inspector.
Resolved that Alfred DeVito of forty-five Grandview Avenue, Pauling, New York, is hereby appointed to the position of assistant building inspector with the village of Rybrook, subject to the civil service procedures of the state of New York, and according to the conditional letter, offer letter dated November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And be it further resolved, the annual salary is one hundred and two thousand five, one oh two, five hundred dollars, with an effective start date of December second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Freddie, I'd like to welcome you to Rybrook and say, uh, thank you for, thank you for joining us. We look forward to it.
I appreciate it.
Do you want to say anything?
Man of little words.
All right.
And while he's coming up, we should mention that Mr. DeVito worked, has been working with the town of Greenberg and also has some experience with the plumbing and heating company, Westchester County, and other plumbing experience, working some plumbing stores. So, we appreciate your, looking forward to having you join us. I know Steve really is especially. But we look forward to having you join the team.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'm here to help out.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, we wait to congratulate, so wait to congratulate.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Now we can congratulate you. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Have a good night, Steve.
Bye, bye, Steve.
All right, bye-bye.
All right, moving into our public hearings. Public hearing, number one, really, the only one. A public hearing on local law amending chapter two forty, section nineteen point one of the village code regarding prohibiting parking on parts of Sleepy Hollow and Law Ridge Drive. Uh, so can I get a, I guess, do we need an intro?
Post to open the public.
Can I get a motion and a second, please, to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, thank you. Greg?
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein?
Yes, glad we can get this on the meeting agenda. I know it's been a couple of times that we've been, we've been setting the date, but now we actually have the public hearing. So, Chris, you wanna give a little background, please?
Sure, yes. This is something that for, um, that the police, came through the police department, that they noticed that, um, the traffic is very much improved when we put the temper, the no parking signs in the area, uh, near the sidewalk that enters in, uh, to the school. And, uh, this is something that we just want to create a more safer location for the students and the kids, for the kids that are going to the school and are being dropped off. And, uh, so we tried to limit it to have the least amount of impact, uh, through some of the discussions with the board, by limiting it to the school drop-off and, um, and pickup times. So this is before the board for discussion. It's a public hearing. And, uh, the, the board has, uh, opened the hearing, so any comments from the public would be appropriate at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this? Please. Yes, please, uh, come into the podium and just state your name and address.
And just for the record, it's on law, the no parking areas are on Law Ridge Drive on the north side, uh, from seven thirty AM to eight thirty AM, and from two to three thirty PM on school day, only on school days, from September first to June thirtieth. And that's on, from Sleepy Hollow to a point two hundred and eighty feet, feet in an easterly direction. And then on Sleepy Hollow, it's on the west side from eight thirty, seven thirty to eight thirty AM, and from two to three thirty PM, again, school days, September first to June thirtieth, from Dorchester to North Ridge Street.
Thank you. Michael Kimmel, nineteen Sleepy Hollow Road. I was here last time this came up and, um, we just want to express and recognize the importance of the safety of our, of our children, of the parents that come in, in through our, in through the neighborhood and use the pathway to access the school. In all honesty, notwithstanding that, I also have some concern over the aesthetic, over lots of signs going down the block. And wanted to, uh, hear and explore and understand what our options are with the signage. I believe last time we, we, this came up at the meeting a month and a half ago or so. We talked about maybe putting them on the telephone poles. I was told that my code is supposed to be in its own post. For the record, there's no parking signs on Ridge Street from King past the school on telephone poles. So, just curious about that and how we do it there, but maybe not on Sleepy Hollow. If that's a no-go, maybe we can look to start from Ridge to Law Ridge on Sleepy Hollow and see if that improves the traffic flow. And maybe then we could be done, not have to necessarily go all the way down the block to Dorchester. So, those are just some thoughts, some ideas. Again, my neighbor Doug Brookman is also here and it would be actually right in the middle of his lawn, and I'm not sure he would be too thrilled about that either. So, if there are options, again, in terms of placement of the posts, placement of the signs, and/or limiting the number of signs, at least to give it a go, that's something I would love for the board and, and our police to consider.
Well, if I remember.
Can I clarify the signage? So the signage, when we put signage, signage out, in order to make it enforceable, we have to follow what they call, it's a manual of uniform traffic control devices. And in there, they give you guidance on different types of signs and how, what distances they have to be placed. That said, if there's, um, we're not looking to put, you don't usually want to put a sign that's obviously smack in the middle of a lawn. You know, if there's a way to move it to an area that's maybe a little bit more obstructed, then we try to do that. But it's kind of a, you have to go out and kind of look at it and see what makes the most sense using those parameters and guidelines of the MUTCD, which is that manual.
And my understanding, if I remember correctly from the last conversation we had about this, is that right now, there's a ton of the paper signs out.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we're really trying to look to get rid of those and make this more formal. And, and my understanding at least is that they're not gonna be, certainly not gonna be as many of the real signs, but we, we do have to follow code. And certainly, I think our village staff will do their best to make sure that, that it's not something that's really
We want the least amount possible.
Yeah.
I could tell you that.
Clearly we want the least amount possible and also at least to choose a spot.
Yes.
My question again is, could we, and I believe Chief Austin mentioned this, or someone mentioned it last time, we could start, just by passing the law doesn't mean we have to install all the signs. I believe what was said last time. Or is that my answer? If you pass the law, do you have to install the signs?
We, in order to enforce it.
In order to enforce it.
In order to enforce it, right, right. But I, I thought you guys said that there was an opportunity maybe to limit it from Ridge to, to, um, Law Ridge initially.
Well, the no parking area can be defined by whatever the local law, whatever's reflected in the local law. So, if you, you can put the no parking area wherever you want to limit it.
Right.
You know, that's, that's just defined by, either by street to street or from, like with some of the, here we do it as a, a feet from an intersection, or there's different ways of indicating how, um, where the signs, where the parking can end. So I think you're suggesting that it be more restricted, the no parking area be more restricted.
At least initially, 'cause, 'cause I said, oh, maybe just make the law from Ridge Street to Law Ridge. And you guys said, yeah, but if we learn that it's not enough, then we have to go through this whole process again. And then you said, well, we can start by putting signs just from Ridge to Law Ridge and see how it goes, even though the law says it goes from Ridge all the way to Dorchester.
I remember it being the other way, start from Ridge to Dorchester and then see how it goes and then reduce it.
Right.
And I. And increase it. That's how I remember the conversation.
Okay. But that means putting all the permanent signs in and then pulling them out?
If we see that, that there's, you know, five cars regularly in the area, then we don't need this long area to have a no parking zone, then we could take the signs out and reduce it, but we'd still have to change the law.
Either way.
Right. I mean, certainly, yeah, well, we certainly, you know, understand your feelings and we'll certainly work with village staff to make it as, as least obtrusive as possible.
Chris, I understand that facing is like two hundred feet?
It's two hundred feet, yeah, not to exceed two hundred feet.
Right, 'cause I know the telephone poles are all one fifty, 'cause I know our, that's our zoning is all about one fifty between.
Right, so every two hundred feet really is, is a good distance between the signs.
And then what we try to do is, we try to.
Maybe you put them right next to each telephone pole?
Well, we try to put them, we generally try to put them where, uh, splitting the lines of both homes, 'cause there tends to be more towards where the driveways are, or, you know, you try to, if you try to keep them on the, splitting the lot, where the lot, the lots are separated, that's usually the best way to go.
Yeah, a lot of times, it's where the utility poles are.
Again, there's some exceptions, but that's generally what we do.
Bushes are, stuff like that, plantings.
Nobody wants to have more signs than we need. I could tell you that.
'Cause you're gonna have a lot more residents that Doug and I.
You're gonna see them. I mean, there's no way not to see them, but.
Right, and, and I think, you know, soon after they go, you know, I think they'll also start to blend into the landscape once you, once you get used to them. And we'll certainly keep it as, as minimal as possible. But as, as a village board, we also have to rely heavily upon our committees, like our traffic commission and our, and our staff, so.
All right, I mean, I, I said my piece and, um, have a different recollection of last time we talked about it, but it is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Any other, uh, comments from the public? Any comments from the board? Nope. All right, let's move into the resolution. Resolution number one, considering adopting a local law amending chapter two forty, section nineteen point one of the village code regarding prohibiting parking on parts of Sleepy Hollow Road and Law Ridge Drive.
Sorry, Mayor, did we close the public hearing?
Oh, you're right, we didn't. I'm sorry.
That was our, our counsel.
Still got it.
Thank you. All right, uh, can I have a motion and second to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second. Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Now, I'm not gonna repeat myself, moving into the resolution.
Whereas the village of Rybrook Police Department seeks to prohibit parking on parts of Sleepy Hollow Road and Law Ridge Drive from September first to June thirtieth, seven thirty AM to eight thirty AM, and from two to three thirty PM to remove safety hazards during school pickup and drop-off. And whereas proposed local law was introduced on September twenty-sixth and to amend chapter two forty of the village code regarding prohibiting parking on parts of Sleepy Hollow and Law Ridge Drive from September first to June thirtieth. And whereas the Board of Trustees held a public hearing on the proposed local law November fourteenth, at which time those interested had an opportunity to be heard, and the public hearing was closed. And whereas proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to seeker, now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby adopts the proposed local law prohibiting parking on parts of Sleepy Hollow and Law Ridge Drive from September first to June thirtieth, seven thirty AM to eight thirty AM, and two to three thirty PM in the afternoons.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All right, any comments? No.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you, and I would ask, uh, village staff to keep in mind the comments that were brought up tonight and try and make this as easy as possible on the residents. Thank you. Moving into resolution number three, considering a request for an extension exemption of chapter one fifty-eight, section two point one of the village code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for the arbors.
Whereas on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, the Board of Trustees approved the local law enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May first through September thirtieth, effective May first of the next year. And whereas under the village code, properties with at least five acres of property can apply for a full or partial, partial extension or exemption of the local law. And whereas the application has been distributed to the known eligible properties in the village of Rybrook and also placed on our website. And whereas on October fourth, representatives of the arbors submitted an application for an exemption from the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. And now therefore be resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as the considerations raised by the application from representatives of the arbors, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby either denies, approves, or approves with conditions the request for the exemption under the village code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban. And then if there's any conditions that are placed on it, they'll be added to the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I guess we're not really doing that, maybe because there's nothing to do it on yet, but, uh, I'm, I'm told we have representatives from the arbors, or, hey, for the first time. Love to.
Good evening, Mayor Klein and members of the Board of Trustees, as well as everyone else. My name is David Gelfarb. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Morrison-Kalish in New York City and a former Rybrook resident of seventeen years. I represent the Arbors Homeowners Association, Inc. The Arbors is applying pursuant to village code section one fifty-eight dash two point one E for exemption from the village's May first through September thirtieth limitation on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. With me tonight are Mr. Dennis Nardone, the landscaper for the arbors, and Mr. Nick Salzarulo, the property manager of the arbors. By way of background, as you may know, the arbors is a townhouse community of two hundred and fifty homes and common hours, uh, areas. Per its website, there are approximately thirty-seven acres, uh, making up the arbors. The common areas include roadways, a clubhouse, tennis courts, swimming pool, a fitness center, paddle tennis court, and detention basins. The landscaping company for the arbors is Adam Landscaping, which is based in Portchester. The owner of the company is Mr. Dennis Nardone. Mr. Dartman Nardone will be speaking about the following issues tonight. The work he does for the arbors, the machinery that he uses, the features of gas and electric-powered leaf blowers and landscaping equipment, charging and battery issues, the availability of electric equipment, and cost issues. Of course, he will be happy to answer any questions from the board. The arbors looks forward to being as green and sustainable as is feasible. As part of that commitment, the arbors has been exploring the use of solar panels at the clubhouse. It has also been engaged in the serious negotiations for the installation of an electric charging station fused by all residents. It has also been working with at least one resident toward a license for the installation of charging equipment for that particular resident. We have been fortunate to have engaged in a productive dialogue with Mr. Rivera. Based upon those discussions, we understand that the board will at least consider granting a two-year exemption with conditions. As such, the arbors would like to propose that in exchange for two-year exemption, it will commit that for all two hundred and fifty homes, it will use battery-powered equipment only on all front walkways, back patios, and decks. Further, the arbors will commit to using its best efforts to ensure that when the landscaper is using any lawn mowers on the property, at least one such lawn mower will be battery-powered. This will help reduce noise in the vicinity of homeowners and further the goals of this legislation. At the same time, it will allow traditional equipment to be used on areas such as roadways, fields, and detention basins, while the association and its landscaper prepare to meet the challenges of the new law. If the board has any questions at this time, I would be pleased to try and answer them. If not, I would like to turn this over to Mr. Nardone. After Mr. Nardone is finished, Mr. Salzarulo will be available for questions as well. If there are any questions for me after Mr. Nardone and Mr. Salzarulo have spoken, I would be glad to address them. On behalf of the arbors, thank you for your time and consideration of this matter.
I don't think, I mean, I can, I can only speak for myself. I don't think I have any further questions until maybe after Mr. Nardone presents.
I'm sort of expecting that, so that's. That's absolutely fine.
But since you said it in your.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen.
Hello.
My name is Dennis Nardone from Portchester. Um, I've been in the landscaping business for about seventeen years now in the Rybrook area alone. We are the landscape contractor for the arbors for going into our, second into our third year now. And we've been trying to be as efficient as we can in, in every way. One of the younger of landscape owners in, in the area, and I, I try to stay on top of the new and up-and-coming technology as it becomes available. Um, I, I pride myself on, on that. We, we take a trip out to Louisville, Kentucky, once a year. There's an annual landscape, um, convention. And I meet with all the manufacturers and vendors and, you know, we tried to purchase the newest equipment that we can and, and the most efficient equipment that we can. In dealing with the new legislation that's not only in Rybrook, obviously, it's in, in other municipalities that we've been dealing with for the past few years. We have already began to convert over to battery-powered equipment. We own some weed whacking, um, equipment, string trimmers, hedge trimmers, backpack blowers as well. We've actually demoed a few of the more commercial lawn mowers as well. And it is something that, as a company, I am looking to invest into over the, over the winter, look, going into, um, into next year. Some information that may be useful is, as David was mentioning, the walkways, patios, that we're planning to use, the battery-powered equipment covers about five acres, which is just shy of fifteen percent of the thirty-seven acres of property. I feel like this is gonna be a good start for us, because it will keep noise away from the units. It just unfortunately, to maintain the roadways, and, and usually, I know you guys may think, who blows the roadways in a municipality? It's usually taken care of by a street, a street sweeper. Private communities don't have the, the street sweepers that come in, so we try to keep the roadways as clear as possible, so there's no issues with people walking there, their strollers, children, what have you, and have any kind of slip and falls. Larger areas such as the common areas, the fields, the, the tennis courts, they're a little difficult to, um, commit to doing with the battery-powered equipment that's available right now. So that's why we would ask that the gas equipment is available to, as a supplement. The gas equipment that we use, um, it's usually one to two years at oldest. We, we, it's pretty much the lifespan that we get out of them, so they, they never really get older than that. What we use now is about sixty percent less emissions than what older models used to be. They use about twenty percent less gas as well. They put out about seventy-nine decibels at full throttle. Just in comparison, a washing machine puts out seventy-eight. The battery equipment puts out, I'm not sure what the battery, sixty-five decibels, which is not significantly lower, but it is a, um, a lower decibel, um, reading. The power is not the same. I do believe that one day, the power will be the same and the longevity of the batteries will, will be the same. But for the time being, we, um, we just ask that we have an opportunity to adapt to the new legislation and be able to supplement with the gas-powered equipment that we've been using for the past seventeen years that we know is effective, tried and true. To switch over completely at this time, I, I wouldn't be able to, um, promise the same service to my clients that I can with what I've been used to using. So, um, if there's any questions that you guys have, I'm happy to answer.
Could you just repeat again the areas that are proposing to do with the electric? It's the walkways, the decks?
The walkways, the decks, and the driveway areas that are in front of each unit. So there's two hundred and fifty of those units. I did a rough calculation and tried to map it all out, and I, I believe it comes up to about fifteen percent of that. It's about four to five acres of property that we would be committing solely to battery-powered equipment.
And as a quick question, I'm assuming during the normal, during, during, you know, non-leaf season, when you're out just mowing.
Right.
Are you, I mean, someone's front yard, are you blowing that as well?
The entire front yard, no, but we.
Cutting.
If, if, if this green area of carpet here is your walkway, and this is your, um, your grass area, where the grass is cut, whether it's with a bag or not, the string trimmer, something is.
Something's gonna come off, right.
Some debris on the walkway that has to be blown off. So that, that's what accounts for all the walkways, driveways.
Right, but you're not blowing the, you're not blowing the clippings off the.
The entire, the clippings, no. We try to bag as much stuff as we can, um, and, and haul that away. Or I believe, um, we have a container on the property that, a green waste container, that C R P will, um, picks up weekly. So no, to answer your question, no, we're not blowing off all of the lawn areas during those summer months, no. And during leaf season, leaf season, yes.
Yeah.
Every square foot of the property gets blown.
Right. Questions?
I have a question. Oh, do you?
Well, the Arbors Association, I guess, had sent you here to argue this, or ask for this variance, or to grant this exemption. I'm assuming, right, you're not, you're not coming here as a contract, you're coming here because of the, it's costing, it'll cost the homeowners there a lot more money.
Correct.
Obviously.
It's gonna cost us more money to operate in that manner if it were solely in battery, which would obviously, um, cost the, my client more money, so.
Right.
I'm here on behalf of them.
And they, okay.
Hi, so what other towns, do you operate in any other towns that have leaf blower laws?
Yeah, we operate in Greenwich, White Plains, and Ry, which all have.
Oh, so what do you do, can you explain like what you do in those cases?
Um, so during the summer months, the properties that we take care of on, in those municipalities don't fall into the same category. It's more residential, small, commercial, that we can, um, effectively use a leaf blower to clear the walkways in a reasonable amount of time. The arbors is thirty-seven acres, like we mentioned. The other properties that we work in these municipalities are, are much smaller, maybe a half an acre to three-quarters of an acre. So it doesn't really come into play the same way that it does here.
So you don't use any, like in Ry, when they had like no gas, you don't use any gas blowers in Ry?
No, we don't use any gas blowers wherever we're not allowed to, during the time that we're not allowed to. I believe all municipalities still allow us to use gas in leaf, during leaf season.
Right, right.
Um, but during the summer, yeah. But if we had a property similar to the arbors in one of those municipalities, we would have the same situation and, and issues that we have here now.
So you already own the tech, some of the technology.
Yes.
That you're proposing, that you would use for people's homes, just not the big areas.
Correct.
Do, do you use any of that now in the arbors or no?
Um, we have used, um, one backpack blower this year. We use it mostly in, on a Greenwich property that we take care of, and on the White Plains one as well. But one backpack blower is just not sufficient. It was just something that we were kind of trying to, to implement slowly, you know, without even the, the law being present yet. It was just something that I wanted to take upon myself to, to try out and test in the field and see what kind of real results would yield from.
Yeah. Questions? Yeah, well, I wonder, Chris, whether we can, does that, can we work the percentages into the resolution?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm just taking my notes, and it's just one area I may need to clarify. But I believe the arbors is requesting an extension through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, which would be a two-year, two seasons. And on the following conditions, that they would use battery painted, battery, um, battery leaf blowers for the two hundred and fifty units, around, around those two hundred and fifty units on walkways, decks, driveways, and also, which represents approximately fifteen percent of the, um, property owned by the HOA. And, uh, would also use, this is the part I need clarification. You also mentioned, David, one large blower would be in use when the other ones are being used?
Your idea being that, that Mr. Nardone would use one battery-powered lawn mower if he were to be using any lawn mowers at the time. So if he's using three lawn mowers, one would be battery-powered.
Okay.
If he's using one lawn mower, it would be battery-powered.
And you're good with this?
It's something that we're discussing yet, so by the time that, um, next season comes around, we can, we can make sure that that's something that we're gonna do, commit to.
Well, we're certainly happy seeing a contractor moving in what we believe to be a, a positive direction.
Yeah, no, believe me, guys, it's something that I wanna do, and, um, like I said, I attend the show yearly, and there's just, as, as other people may contest too, there is not, I, trust me, I've been doing this in the field, and the numbers that they put out are not accurate to real-world numbers. They'll claim that you get X amount of minutes out of a battery, you just don't see that. That's why I went ahead and, and have done the research and made these purchases prior to even having to do it, because I wanted to see what would be required and what we would actually need. But it, there are a lot of pros to it, and I am all for it. I just would appreciate the time to allow us to catch up to keep the same efficiency that we do now.
David, would you be willing to read what your proposal was to, again, please? Just that section of your speech?
Yes.
First, I did want to respond to one of the, uh, comments from Mr. Marino. Mr. Rivera, as you may know, had encouraged us strongly to bring our landscaper. So, you know, connection with the application, that's why he's here. He's the most knowledgeable and the most informed as to landscaping practices and what the.
I understand that, yeah.
He didn't just take it upon himself to drop it tonight.
Good.
Same with Mr. Bulfamonte, who will be speaking soon. All right, what, what the arbors is proposing in exchange for two-year exemption is that it will use. arbors is proposing in exchange for a two-year exemption is that it will use battery powered equipment on all front walkways, back patios, decks, and driveways. And in addition, it will use its best efforts to ensure that when the landscaper is using lawn mowers on the property, at least one such lawn mower will be battery powered.
Okay. I, I, um, I find the concept of best efforts to be a little bit squishy.
Right. Well, that's because, you know, it's, it's not, you know, if, if the work has to get done and the, the battery powered unit breaks, or it malfunctions, or there's charging issues, and the work needs to be done, you know, for that day, it might have to go back to using, you know, only gas. But, but best efforts means a real effort. Best efforts is a lot more than reasonable. Best efforts means he's gonna make his best effort. There's always things out of someone's control, but it's, you know, we're not saying we'll give it a good shot. So, you know, that's, that's where we are.
There's, is there a lot of common ear, I mean, I know it's all common area, but I'm trying to think, there's not a much, in front of each home, there's not much lawn, right? It's kind of a, small patches of lawn.
It's more in the backyards.
Back, in the back section, near the path and the whole bit, that's where you would use more of the gas stuff, I would assume.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess close to the houses, if you use all the electric, that would be-
There's a lot of space there.
A nice-
Behind those houses, there's a lot of space.
There is, yeah, I know, remember, you're right, in the back.
A lot of detention ponds, a lot of walls, retaining walls, there's a lot going on behind.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I remember the property back there now. Right, right, right.
And there's also a buffer area in between, I believe, the parkway and the back of, um, those fields we'll call them.
Yes.
That have a lot of trees that produce a lot of leaves that hold-
For the leaf blowers, right. Now, it's, it's, uh-
If you guys don't mind, I did wanna mention, Greg had, had mentioned to me during our meeting last week, we had also spoke about using the gas powered blowers at what we would call half throttle. Um, and again, there's really not much of a, a way to, to dictate what half throttle is. But going back to what David was saying, it would be, you know, like our best effort to ensure that, um, which would keep the decibel reading down and keep obviously the air pollution down as well, um, in times where we would need the gas powered equipment. So that's also something that we were, you know, willing to, to commit to as well.
Well, I mean, just with that, we'd have to clarify where, because it's obviously a lot of space, you know? I don't know about by the retention ponds and, you know, the tennis courts and all of that, I mean.
And, and leaf season is another, just a completely other, another animal. Um, today alone, we did, uh, the majority of ours are re-cleaning up over there and we, all the way, three hundred, um, I'm sorry, thirty cubic yards of-
Gotta read something again?
Just today alone from the front yards of-
Wow.
Which I did a quick formula on, it's about thirty-five hundred pounds of leaves. So for a battery powered blower to try to remove that amount of leaves in one day, I don't see happening. That's why we need the-
Well, that's why we said during leaf season, you could use gas, yeah.
But I know eventually that's where it will go and hopefully we'll have the equipment available to do that at the time.
I absolutely think that's where, that's where it's headed.
Of course.
Hopefully.
All right. Chris, can you read that?
Sure, I'll take another shot at it.
Can you read back the resolution?
So the resolution, if, if the board amends it, would be approving the request for an exemption of the village code ena-, uh, enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for the arbors for, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and be it further resolved that the approval of the exemption includes the following conditions. And the conditions are that the arbors shall use battery powered leaf, uh, leaf blowers along the front walkways, decks, driveways, which represent approximately fifteen percent of the arbors development, uh, in and around the, um, two hundred and fifty homes. I'll, I'll put that a little earlier.
Right.
In around the two hundred and fifty homes, uh, which represent, and this area represents approximately fifteen percent of the arbors development, and be it further, and further condition that the arbors shall use, I don't know if the board wants to use the best efforts language, but best efforts to use one battery powered leaf, leaf, um, lawn mower when they're doing, um, when other equipment is being used, when other lawn mowing equipment is being used.
And this is going through-
Whether the full throttle or not.
Through two thousand and twenty-five, so he's got two seasons, like we did the last-
And what the board did is where the, the, where the developments have shown good faith to, to move in that direction, the board was willing to give the two years.
We did.
If you, if they weren't, then you've considered the one year.
Right, okay. That's good. All right, so we give them a-
I didn't mention anything about the throttle. If the board wants that, you need to let me know.
No, I think it's too difficult to-
Yeah.
It also seems like it would be twice, take twice as long.
I don't know how you enforce it anyhow.
Yeah.
All right.
And do you wanna use the best li, the best effort language or not?
Speaking only for myself, um, I have seen people drive trucks through best effort language.
But here it might be-
Speaks to intent.
Not small trucks, but I'm talking eighteen wheelers.
But here in, look, we are right next to Village Hall and the outstanding R, R B P D. So, so it would be very, you know, you're gonna know very quickly.
Listen, a lot of this does, a lot of, a lot of this does speak to intent, you know, the intent of-
I guess my feeling, and I'm, I'm being serious now, is if one of the unforeseen circumstances came up, such as the planned mower that you were going to use breaks or something like that, I don't think there would be any problem from our end. But I really, the best efforts just, I really don't like those words. I just want a commitment that you'll do it and then come to us if you can.
I mean, I guess what we could say is recognizing that, I believe the statute provides for, uh-
Emergencies are, are-
Circumstance, one fifty-eight dash two point one C, you know, on, on, we could say then, you know, we will, we will do that unless, unless, um, uh, an exemption is granted by the, uh, village engineer pursuant to one fifty-eight dash two point one C, something like that.
Yeah, just, just let Mike know that, gee, you know, we had great intentions, God had other ideas.
Battery caught on fire.
We're no, no.
It all just happened in New York City, so I don't wanna hear about that.
I won't put that part in the, in the, no, about, about even contacting us. So I think we're all reasonable.
I was gonna say, hold on.
I'm not gonna put in about notifying Michael, I think that's just practice.
You know what I almost wish we did was, I almost wish we did, we put something in there to get some kind of feedback after a year on these people, you know?
From whom?
From the landscapers and their progress and what their feedback is and-
You can also require some kind of, uh, update from the, after a year from the, from the-
How it's going.
Yeah, ask the arbors, but yeah.
We could probably just request that.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to put it in the resolution.
No, I agree.
I think we could do- If they want, go beyond twenty twenty-five.
Just let it, let's let it, they're not gonna put it in.
You can't ask them to up, uh, purchase newer equipment, uh, or more equipment, more battery powered equipment.
Okay. Sure. And, uh, yeah. So Greg, Greg Rivera, my assistant, has done a, a great job really reaching out to all of the people who are eligible and try to provide guidance on what the board's done so far. Not that there's any, you know, guarantee that you have to do everything going forward, but at least giving feedback on, on what's been approved. And he's had a good dialogue with, uh, the developers as well as their, um, their associations and their landscapers. And one of the things that he said they would do is they would reach out to Greg and have him take a look at what they're doing throughout the process. So that was something that was-
Yeah, I don't think we need to work out any more resolution though.
But it does need to be there. But the good news is you're having a dialogue there with, with staff.
Yeah, no, and I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, but I always see what's on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be interested too.
And that's what it's about, is a dialogue. At least, it does speak to the intent.
Are we comfortable with the resolution then?
Yeah, yeah. And I do, I just wanna say Greg was very, very kind and, and helpful last week and he reached out and he provided a lot of insight and I do appreciate that very much from you guys and from Greg as well.
Chris, maybe-
As amended, or you wanna me do it?
One more ti, just one, just that section, one more time, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Sure, hereby, hereby approves the, uh, an extension through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and be it further resolved that the approval of the exemption includes the following conditions. And the conditions are that the arbors will use battery powered leaf blowers on the front walkways, decks, and driveways, uh, in and around the two hundred and fifty, uh, homes in the arbors, which represents approximately fifteen percent of the arbors development, and further, also, further agrees to use one battery powered lawn mower when they're using other lawn mowing equipment.
All right. Do we need the whole part about it representing fifteen percent?
The mayor asked for that, so that's why I, I-
That's a ridiculous reason to put it on there.
I don't, I don't, we don't need it. We don't need it.
It's up to the board. The majority of the board can do whatever they want.
I, I really, I don't care. I'm not committal on that one. If you wanna scrap, if you wanna scratch the fifty, scratch, scratch the fifteen percent, Chris.
Once they agree to do certain work, it makes no difference whether it's-
With the percentage.
We'll take it out.
All right.
It's out. You need, you need, uh, as amended.
All right. May I have a motion in a second, as amended, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any further comments from the board?
No.
I promised I'd behave, no.
All right.
Did you?
Greg?
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Iser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for taking steps forward. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I can't wait to hear and see how your progress is.
All right, moving on to resolution number four. Consider a request for an extension exemption of chapter one fifty-eight, section two point one of village code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for Belfair.
Whereas on April eleventh, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved a local law enacting a seasonal gas blower, gas powered leaf blower ban from May first to September thirtieth, effective May first of next year. And whereas this village, the village code allows for properties of five acres or more to apply for a full or partial exemption of the, or extension of the local law. And whereas the application has been distributed to the various, uh, properties that are eligible to make that application. And whereas on October the thirty-first, representatives of Belfair submitted an application for exemption of the requirements requiring a seasonal gas ban on, on, uh, leaf blowers. And therefore be resolved that consideration of the intent of the local law as well as the considerations raised in the application from representatives of Belfair, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees either denies, approves, or approves with conditions the request for an exemption of the village code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for Belfair.
Thank you, Chris. I think we'll hold off on any motion or second-
Yep.
Until we have, as amended, depending on where we go from here. All right. And I believe we have representation for the Belfair HOA. Mr. Gelfarb, Kim, please.
Oh, I love her. Wow, he looks a lot like the last one.
Groundhog bear.
Yeah.
Well, again, good evening, Mayor Klein and members of the Board of Trustees. Once again, my name is David Gelfarb. I am an attorney with the firm of Moss and Kalish in New York City and a former Rybrook resident. By way of full disclosure, I was also the president of the, uh, Belfair Homeowners Association way back when. I'm here on behalf of the Belfair Homeowners Association, Inc. The association is applying pursuant to village code, section one fifty-eight dash two point one E, for exemption from the villages May first through September thirtieth, limitation on the use of gas powered leaf blowers. With me tonight are Mr. Sebastian Bulfamanti, the landscaper for Belfair, Mr. Mike Schleifer, the treasurer of the Board of Belfair, and Mr. Rafael Reyes, the community manager for Belfair. By way of background, the entire parcel of what is known as Belfair at Rybrook is approximately one hundred and ten acres. The senior living center, now known, I believe, as Atria at Rybrook, encompasses about five acres. This application does not encompass Atria, and we will not further address that property. The remainder of Belfair is a community of two hundred and sixty-one homes and common areas. The common areas include roadways, the village green, a meeting house, a playground, indoor-outdoor pool, and large detention basins. There is also a deli and a daycare center which has its own playground. As you may know, several of the roads in Belfair are not dedicated to the village and are thus privately maintained. The common areas per se total about fifty-one acres of Belfair. In addition, there are different categories of homes in Belfair with different levels of service offered to them by the association. Specifically, there are one hundred and seventy-three single-family detached homes. Belfair does not provide landscaping for those homes. This application is not intended to and does not encompass any of the single-family homes. There are eighty-eight of what are called maintenance included homes. There are three categories of maintenance included homes. There are thirty single-family village homes which are situated on or near the village green. There are forty-six duplex villas, which, as the name indicates, are homes which share a common wall. There are also twelve attached townhouse homes which are dedicated to municipal employees, including Blindbrook School District employees, Corchester School District employees, and Village of Rybrook employees. The association provides landscaping services for the common areas and all of the eighty-eight maintenance included homes. The landscaping company for the arbors is Dominic Bulfamanti and Sons, Inc., which is based nearby in New Rochelle. Mr. Sebastian Bulfamanti is in charge of all of the work done at Belfair. Mr. Bulfamanti will be speaking about the following issues: the work he does for Belfair, the machinery he uses, the features of gas and electric powered leaf blowers and landscaping equipment, charging and battery issues, the availability of electric equipment, and cost issues. Of course, you will be happy to answer questions from the board. Lastly, Belfair looks forward to being as green and sustainable as is feasible and toward working towards the goals of the legislation. As part of that commitment, Belfair has been reviewing the feasibility of and considering the use of electric push blowers, weed whackers, and push mowers. There is also a consideration of use of area at or around the meeting house for charging of battery operated equipment. As with the arbors, we have been engaging with respect to Belfair in a productive dialogue with Mr. Rivera. Again, based upon those discussions, we understand that the board will at least consider granting a two-year exemption. Belfair would like to propose that in exchange for a two-year exemption, it will commit that for all eighty-eight maintenance included homes, it will use battery powered equipment only on all sidewalks, lawns, walkways, and decks. This will help reduce noise in the vicinity of homeowners and further the goals of the legislation. At the same time, it will allow traditional equipment to be used on areas such as roadways, fields, and detention basins, while the association and Mr. Bulfamanti prepare to meet the challenges of the new law. If the board has any questions at this time, I would be pleased to try and answer them. If not, I would like to turn this over to Mr. Bulfamanti. After he has finished speaking, I may ask Mr. Schleifer and/or Mr. Reyes to address you. If the board has any questions for me after Mr. Bulfamanti and possibly Mr. Schleifer and Mr. Reyes are finished, I would be glad to address them at that time. On behalf of the Belfair Homeowners Association, thank you for your time and consideration of this matter.
Mayor, can I, just to clarify, David, there's a hundred and fifty units, uh, a hundred and fifty homes that are not maintained by the HOA.
Hundred and seventy-three.
Hundred and seventy-three.
Yes.
And there's, and you're proposing that the eighty-eight that are maintained by the HOA be part of the, uh, let, maintained by electric blowers on the sidewalks, decks, and walkways?
Yes. And in fact, since the other ones are not covered by this, and since none of them, of course, reach the five acre limit-
Yep.
What this will end up having is that every single home in Belfair will be covered by the legislation. So, you know, in effect, only the larger common areas will, you know, will still be, uh-
Does Mr. Bulfamanti do the landscaping for those hundred and seventy-some odd homes?
You'll have to ask him, but everyone does their own thing.
Okay.
You know, everyone has a choice of who they wanna use. I'll, I, you'll have to ask him.
Okay.
But they're not required to, certainly.
I understand that, I'm just curious.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
No.
All right. Would you like to answer Mr. Bulfamanti?
Please.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I mean, you got, uh, pretty much a good description of blowers with the gas compared to batteries. We're all in the same boat when it comes to that. The equipment just isn't there. But making these concessions, we would need the gas powered equipment more for the bigger areas that, you know, a battery pack is gonna last you a half hour, but meanwhile, you know, you're working there all day long. So cutting back on everything, we would definitely, you know, lower the amount of gas power equipment needed when we're there on a weekly basis. You know, it would be more for the, like they were saying, the pool areas, we would need it for, uh, where the daycare centers, because they have playgrounds, uh, some of the retention areas that we have to check on. And there's some roadways that the city doesn't go in, you know, to sweep it with the sweeper. So we would have to keep those clean. But other than that, I mean, if these guys have any questions.
Do you have, uh, do you have, uh, electric leaf blowers and electric lawn mowers?
We have electric leaf blowers, lawn mowers, and we have a ride-on also that-
Electric.
We've already started using in Belfair this year.
Electric, interesting, good. So you, we're heading in the right direction?
Well, we're trying, just that, you know-
I understand, it's just not-
The right equipment's not there yet.
Yeah.
But as it, you know, is available, we're trying different, you know, mowers and ride-on blowers and backpack blowers. But, you know, the big thing is that, you know, when you're using a backpack blower, it has two batteries in it. It'll give you about, in it. It'll give you about, you know, an hour's worth of blow time. Now you have to charge it. When you're starting to charge all these batteries, you can't just go plug it into a regular house outlet, you know, because it's drawing a lot of amperage. So, you know, that's one of the problems that we're faced with, is just the runtime on the batteries.
Right. So I guess every night when you bring your equipment back, you have to plug it all in, charge it for the next day?
Right.
And you'll get...
So in our, you know, where we keep everything...
Keep your storage stuff.
Had already upgraded all our electric to plug in all these batteries.
Batteries, right.
Because you plug it in a lot every night.
Okay. I think...
I was just wondering if you know whether Belfair is considering putting in a charging station for these batteries?
That would be something that, you know...
That has not been considered by the board at this time. I mean, from what I was told from our property manager...
From what I was informed from our property manager, so Sebastian already has started to use battery. He actually services my house. I live in a single-family home. And when he's there, he actually is using, we have a kitchenette area in our clubhouse as well as outlets in our community room. So Raf has informed me that he's actually using that. I don't know, technically, it's not really cut out or wasn't designed to charge leaf blower batteries, so little concerned that it's probably not the safest way to charge it, especially if he's up there all day. But, you know, it's a start and we're accommodating, but it hasn't yet been a topic of discussion in terms of, from our board, as to whether or not we're going to install additional upgrades of electrical to accommodate this, so.
Well, it's got two years to work on that one. But is this a good thing you have?
That amongst other agenda items we have that are higher priority, yes.
Well, because, you know, if we grant this two-year extension, you're going to try to, you know, you'll be coming back probably to, or hopefully not. I mean, that's the whole idea.
We'll see how the technology evolves over the course of the next two years. We'll see if it's still needed. We'll see how, you know, what the efficiency is. I mean, look, we're, you know, we're here. We want to work with you guys. We want to, we want to try to be as efficient as possible, and we want to, you know, make sure that we're making the right impact on the community.
But like my associate said, the upgrade for electrical is minimal cost. I know, it doesn't draw, it's 110 volt receptacle.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I don't know what the upgrade cost is or not.
It's not, yeah.
We have other priorities in the HOA besides that at the moment.
But that was a very good idea, you said.
Well, it's also because you're going to have 170-plus houses that have to use electrical.
Electric, no, that's a good point.
That has nothing to do with...
I know it has nothing to do with it.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the application. And those 170 houses, including myself that lives in one of those, we are free to choose whatever landscape provider we want to service our property, or we can do it ourselves.
See, there's a difference between just going to do one, you know, quarter rake a lot with a battery powered and when you're spending, you know, two days inside of a development, you know, you're not, it's really not comparable. You know what I mean?
Just to give you an example of those other 173, we recently had to have our leaf truck go up there because some, one of the residents or two of the residents wanted to bring the leaves to the curb. And it's a level of service that's covered by your taxes if you bring them to the curb. So we've had to send our truck up there now.
We pick up all the leaves on the maintenance-included ones. We have to load them up and, you know...
Yeah, but for that, we work with you by opening up the compo site to get access there.
I understand.
All right, any other questions?
Nope.
Chris, can you read back the resolution, please?
Yes, I'll just read the resolve clause. So therefore, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves an exemption, oh, sorry, an extension through September 30th, 2025, and that it's further resolved that the approval of the extension includes the following conditions. And the conditions are that the, for the 88 homes that are maintained by the HOA, that the HOA will use, arrange to use battery-powered leaf blowers in and around the unit, those 88 units on the sidewalks, decks, and walkways in the development.
Sidewalks?
Decks and walkways. Sidewalk, oh, driveways.
Driveways.
Sidewalks, decks, and walk, patios and walkways. Are there patios?
Some houses have. Yeah, some have.
Sidewalks, decks, patios, and driveways.
Mr. Gelfarb, that's, and Mr. Bulfamanti?
Yes.
As long as we're okay with the driveways. All right, that's fine. Right, that's fine. Okay.
Okay, can I have a motion in second as amended, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any comments?
No.
Again, my comment would be, you know, thank you for keeping this in mind and working towards, I think, what's in the best interest of our community.
And he's already, and like I said, he's already started all ahead of the legislation.
Which is great. Which is great. We appreciate that. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Greg?
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. All right, resolution number five. Considering approval of a change order and fiscal year 2223, general fund budget transfer and capital fund budget modification to fund walkway roof and boiler repairs.
Whereas the village has incurred a change order to install additional chimney piping to address chimney offset, the required additional materials and labor for the AJP Boiler Project in the amount of $3,957.28. And whereas the following general fund budget transfer and capital fund modification to fund the walkway and boiler project from the current fiscal year be approved. And it's basically transferring $5,000 from contingency to the interfund account, which then increases the capital fund money for this particular project. And be it further resolved, the following capital project budget be restated as follows. It's the approving the change order for the year 2023 and modifying the budget. So it goes, the project budget goes from 198,250 to 203,250.
Is there another, I have another further...
And be further resolved, the village board approves the change order from Mackey Heating in the amount of $3,957.28 to install additional chimney piping and to address the chimney offset for the AJP Walkway and Boiler Project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Thank you.
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, when is this going to be done? We keep getting change orders.
Yeah, although they're very small. Last one, I think, was $750.
I really can't complain. I really can't complain, so...
No, and the boiler work is done and the walkway is well underway.
Phenomenal.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
So it's great.
Great news. Well, we appreciate all the hard work everyone's putting into this. It was certainly needed, and we look forward to our residents being able to reap the benefits for years to come. Any questions or comments from the board?
No. Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six. Considering an IMA between the village of Rybrook and the county of Westchester for transportation of prisoners. My resolution isn't quite complete.
No, mine either.
Just as and the.
And the. Therefore be it resolved that the village of Rybrook is authorized to enter into a municipal agreement with Westchester County for prisoner transportation for the period of January 2024 to December 31st, 2024 as follows, and that's for that period this calendar year in the amount of $254.75. I guess that's per trip. Is that what it is?
No, it is.
Trip, and be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator...
Make sure it says that.
Yes, exactly. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And I'm assuming that is in the contract itself, so that would be fine, and...
I'm looking right now.
It is.
Something that we do every year.
That's where we got it from.
Questions or comments?
It's in the end.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven. Considering declaring municipal equipment as surplus.
Whereas the village of Rybrook has equipment that is no longer of functional value or use to the village and may have a resale value, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees declares the equipment below a surplus with these items to be published in the official newspaper of the village and sold to the highest qualified bidder through an approved electronic bidding process with Auctions International. There is one three-yard stainless steel salter and one 60-gallon vertical electric air compressor. Be it further resolved that if no bids are received for an item, that the items may be disposed of through appropriate means. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Motion.
Second.
It's pretty straightforward. I hate air compressors because when they purge, it's always...
This is looking, we can get much for these though.
We'll get some. All right, yeah.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight. Considering modifying the dates for village board meetings in December of 2023.
So maybe the board should just, before you move and we read the resolution...
Yeah, let's, I'm proposing that we go to the first meeting only, the 12th.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm not here actually, the 26th, so that works fine.
You can also pick another date too, obviously.
No, let's just do one.
I'd rather just do 12. I'd rather just do 12. Keep it on our normal second Tuesday, if that's okay with everyone.
I'm good with that.
All right.
Yep, perfect.
As amended, can I have a motion in second, please?
I didn't read it yet. So the village of Rybrook hereby, Board of Trustees hereby cancels the meeting to be held on December 26th due to scheduling concerns.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, Greg.
There you go.
We'll just make it easy. Resolution number nine. Considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on July 11th, 2023.
Now therefore be resolved, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on July 11th, 2023.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, administrators report, please.
Okay, quick, couple of quick items. One, just a reminder that overnight winter parking started, starts tomorrow? Starts tonight at midnight at November 15th. There you go. At 2:00 AM, okay. So overnight winter parking starts now.
That's right.
Is it going to give warnings, like for the first...
Yeah, we typically give warnings for... And...
Unless you've gotten three warnings already.
Leaf collection's going well, you know, we're, how many? We're currently 10 days out, so if you're putting your leaves out now, it's approximately 10 days before they're picked up. We're heading into the peak time period right now, so that's why. But if, again, reminder, there's been a lot of pickups on all the streets, and you can go to our website and see what dates they were picked up on, as well as an estimate of when they'll be picked up next time. And lastly, just want to mention that the, we've got some good news that after several years, believe it or not, the county stormwater mitigation grant was approved by the Board of Legislators. That's for Avon and the Portchester Middle School. And that's an over $3 million grant. So now we're looking for the other half of the funding from other grants that we're submitting. And if we're able to get that, then we're able to move ahead. So, yeah, they approved $3.58 million through the stormwater mitigation program. And that was good news. That's all I have for tonight.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Any other comments from the public?
Yes, I have new business.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that the clock that I am staring at be corrected to the correct time.
Isn't that the one that, is that not the one that's hooked in?
Is that an atomic one, or is that a...
It was done before they, before they switched the dates of daylight saving.
Can I get a second for my motion?
Second.
I think we can probably get that done. All right, I do need the motion in second. Well, I'd say thank you and good night to everyone, but I do need a motion in second to go back into executive session, please, where we will continue to discuss non-union compensation and community pass the terms of use.
So moved. Stay right here. You turned the camera off.
Yeah, there were three so moved. So you choose who you want for the second, I think.
Is it an atomic one, or is it a battery?
And then I guess we do need a vote on that, so.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you and good night. And look, the clock's already at the right time.